It's either we leave or you leave. It would be my preference, since we have some chairs out in our lobby, if you don't mind, and I hate to ask this of the public, but that you exit there because the only other option, quite frankly, is for us to go back into the city manager room. I think it's important that we don't look like we're going into some back room. I want us to sit here. No, you're not here. I want an executive session.
I got smoke, cigar.
Here. No. So, I think it'll be maybe ten to fifteen minutes max. I apologize, but we've been requested and need to do so. So, since we've opened the meeting, we will continue the agenda upon coming back, but we have just a short example.
And it's under 192-661-H.
192-661-H.
Nineteen.
Thank you. And are there any members of staff or others that should remain?
Staff.
Charlie, that's your vote.
I'd like to call to order once again, we're in executive session, re-convening our city commission meeting, moving on to our full agenda here, and I'd like to ask the audience to do an announcement.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to recall that for which stands one nation, and our individual, with which we stand.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of our executive session minutes of July sixteenth and our regular meeting minutes of August twentieth.
Mayor, I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lynch.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Neely.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. I understand there is no department update tonight. Next is the time on the agenda for any announcements or requests for future agenda items. Dave?
Did we have approval of minutes of last? This is the executive session.
And August twentieth.
Oh, I missed it. There was an additional to the five minutes.
Oh, okay. Hang on.
Sorry about that.
Yeah. Is there something missing here?
Yeah, just because I was being difficult, I wanted to make sure it's put in.
All right.
I critique trymen, I critique trymen for not coming to the commission earlier, and that critique isn't there. I want to make sure that some of the, I critique them for not coming to the survey. Even though I think they've done a good job, they should make the presentation.
Okay, and I do recall that.
Don't be difficult.
The issue of note, will, what would be appropriate to just amend these minutes or amend that issue onto tonight's?
Okay.
Just make a note of it as a correction on tonight's minutes, that fact that statement is made.
Yeah.
Next then is any announcements or requests for future agenda? Good, Dave?
David, 19345 Tower Press Drive. Just to announce that the Tower Vista Neighborhood Association will meet September eleventh at John McLaughlin, seven o'clock. On the agenda this time will be the chief, Davis has come to talk to us about the bond for this November election. I just wanted the mayor to know too, that the steering committee approved the Tower Vista Neighborhood Association hosting a state-of-the-city address the first week in January, and so we're looking forward to putting that on for the cities.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, my name is Tom Reinbold, 1969 Southeast Myers Road, Oregon City. I was told that I should come and speak to you at this time tonight. I'm here to appeal a staff decision. It was on your agenda for the twentieth, but I couldn't be present that night. I was told that this was the time to make my presentation. I have a handout for the members of the commission and for staff, if I could handle this at this time.
Do you get handout, but right now is really a request for a future agenda? Would you like this added to be a future agenda?
Sure. Yes, sir.
Why don't you give us your information? Make sure it gets out through the city recorder.
She had it on already.
Is there, I do know that we as a commission did talk about on the twentieth, is there consensus or indication of wanting to get this on a future agenda?
I guess I'm concerned that if we put it on to a future agenda, it's just going to delay what needs to be done and it may need the other part of Mark. I thought we came to a decision last time.
I thought so too. Is there any other comments? Were you, were you given any direction as to the discussion or the direction the commission gave?
I was given a day and a half's warning for the meeting on the twentieth, and I was attending a function in Washington, could not be there, and apprised the staff that I could not be there at that meeting on the twentieth, the staff went ahead anyway. And I think that it's important, obviously we think it's important, that our side of this discussion be placed on some sort of a record. We are feeling pretty unhappy about the decision.
Does, I just query the staff on a day and a half notification?
To that extent, we believe a day and a half is more notice. First off, it doesn't belong before the city commission's decision. It's done administratively at my position at the ultimate level, and I think I expressed that interest, that concern to you originally, I was very uncomfortable even discussing it. It was based on engineering standards, and we believed that there was an error made on behalf of Mr. Reinbold, and that was his status, and I think you're aware of what we intend to do to proceed.
I will just say, and I don't want to labor this too much, but that we did hear the item, and in an agreement with Charlie, we felt that this was not a political decision, but a technical decision, and that we really did not vote on the issue because we felt it wasn't necessary to make it a political vote. However, and correct me if I'm wrong, any member of the commission, by our not voting, we felt that the staff decision was, in a sense, the decision from the technical side that should be communicated back to you. Is that fair?
I would say that there was a consensus from the commission that it go back to Charlie for that decision. That's more fair statement.
Yeah. So, I should talk with Mr. Leeson tomorrow at this convenience?
I think you're aware of our decision. We expect you failed to live up to requirements we requested in the past, and we feel you're non-compliant, and we're in a position to exercise a option and revocation of your later credit, and we, you or us, at this point, we will proceed and correct the problem.
Okay, so we can't get a fair hearing on this matter?
That's your words, I think you have. Failed to live up to obligation that we think is adequate.
We don't feel that we have it all, Mr. Leeson.
Obviously.
Dave? Any other requests for a future agenda or announcements? I have an announcement.
You have two. One might be yours.
The First City Festival, the Antique Fair.
Well, I'll come up with something afterwards on the same day.
Oh, yes, okay, I know. Okay, we have two quick announcements.
There are some things I want to cover at the end of the.
Right, okay, I just want to announce during the announcement time that Sunday, September fourteenth, in downtown Oregon City, is our second annual Antique Fair, and it's quite a large event. Last year, I assume the planning, advertising is going for it this year, but if you didn't attend last year's plan for September fourteenth, then come on down to Main Street, and you won't be disappointed. Rain or shine, as it did last year. Doug?
The actual main event on September fourteenth.
The warm-up event.
It is the warm-up. The main event is the End of the Trail Run. It's actually a program that is a fundraiser for Oregon City's Parks and Recreation. It begins at nine o'clock on September fourteenth, this is Sunday. There is a five-kilometer, eight-kilometer walk, which is approximately three miles, and an eight-kilometer run, which is approximately five miles, maybe more than five miles. I believe it's a ten-dollar charge for the five-k walk, a twelve-dollar charge for the run, and if you do, if you do your registration ahead of time, if you wait for the running day, it's actually twenty-five dollars, but it is supported the Parks and Recreation Program here. Part of the funds will also be used to support the cross-country program and the Oregon City School Program. It's part of our getting volunteers thrown to help administer the run. And encourage you all to pay. If you don't run or walk, we don't care. You don't owe us very much money. And you can pick these up at the car maintenance center. If anybody's interested, you can walk up here before you leave and pick up a few here too.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements right now with the agenda? Okay, the first item is a public hearing, and it's our commission report number ninety-seven one three zero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commission. This report had been before you, once before. Tamra DeRitter has worked this process at my request to the planning commission, and it's before tonight of consideration. As you know, a little background, there's some property located on the Leland Road area that your Parks and Recreation Committee has recommended for future acquisition of property. You have authorized me, with some limitations, to explore the possibility of acquiring that property owned by the school district. We're in those negotiations, listing and advising the city attorney, there's some things that should happen, and part of that, before you expend those types of funds, it needs to be identified generally in that location. So, this property needs to be identified as potential park property, that author, that would be one element of authorizing us to expend funds to acquire. So, I'm not saying that we're acquiring the property, but this is a step to allow us, if you eventually decide, acquire the property, to make that happen. So, what, I think Tamra can get up and give her stuff.
Thank you, Tamra.
Thank you, Mayor. I have been working on this off and on with Rick McLean, who reported this to me from the Parks Committee. And it contains, the area that was forwarded to me included two properties, one which is owned by the Oregon City School District, number sixty-two, and the other one, which is owned by Cheryl Vincent. And it was my understanding in, as it was forwarded to me, that negotiations were going on to purchase this area that had been identified. Fact is, that Cheryl Vincent knew nothing of this. And so, when I went to the planning commission, the planning commission was given this information, and I have tried to contact her and ask her for authorization to go ahead and identify this as future acquisition. We now have that, and I received that as of today. So, the staff report that you have in your packet excludes her property altogether. And the reason it's shown on there in the first place, this is a fifty-foot wide access easement across tax lot four hundred, which is Cheryl Vincent's property. And the question becomes, she contends that there's no access easement across her property. I've got documentation from the school district saying there is access easement. You know, I think that can be worked out. The whole question becomes whether or not it should be shown in this map as future acquisition. And she did say that we can go ahead and identify this as future acquisition, but a letter from her attorney received today states, "I do represent Cheryl Vincini," that's her true name, "enclosed this document and request my client to execute before your city commission meeting on September third, nineteen ninety-seven." Miss Vincini, did I say that right? Desenzie, thank you, "has executed the document or wish afforded with the understanding and on the condition that your authorized agency of her interest will not bind her in any way to agree to a future sale of the mentioned real property to the city of Oregon City or the Park Department." Is her position that there is not a current easement favoring the mentioned fifty-foot strip running to tax lot five oh one, Oregon City School District property? I explained to you on the phone today, the easement runs only in favor of lots, tax lots, six hundred, six oh one, and seven hundred, based on a December fourteenth, nineteen sixty-two deed. And with these understandings, you are authorized to use the accompanying authorized agency agreement. So, with that, and I just want to clarify that there, what is happening is a change to the comprehensive plan for this map, master map for Parks and Recreation. It's the neighborhood and parks map, and identifying now a total of fifteen point nine three acres for future acquisition. This in no way says we will have to buy this property. It's only a symbol identifying the area for which we need to purchase the property in future, and as directed by our attorney. The Parks Master Plan, I mean, the comprehensive plan is the second map that's attached to the new ordinance, and it is changing only the property that is currently owned by the school district, low-density residential to parks. And it does leave out that easement. Are there any questions?
I'm sorry, your last statement, it does leave out that easement, is that right?
Yes.
Any, any questions?
Is the deletion we're talking about, the five-acre parcel, is this the property that we're talking about that is, might Cheryl Vincini?
No, the five-acre parcel that's being deleted is not Cheryl's property. We're talking about the property that runs on Leland Road.
Yeah, I didn't think it was. So, I presume that this five-acre parcel was something that was identified earlier on as potential, as property for parks.
That's correct.
Yeah. And I have a little concern about the deletion because I understand that Charlie's in negotiation regarding the potential acquisition of the fifteen, almost sixteen-acre parcel from the school board, but should that not happen? What would happen if, in fact, we were not able to procure that property, and we had nothing designated as potential park property?
Well, that's a good question. I think our attorney could best handle this, but my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, these are to be identifying symbols of acreage in this general vicinity. If we have more than enough acres, fine. If we have too little, that's a problem. And so, right now, we've got basically a four-point-seven-seven acre piece that has been deleted. We don't need five acres plus fifteen point nine three.
I guess my real query is, is it necessary at this time to make the deletion, and we really don't know whether we can acquire the other pieces?
Well, right now, you don't have the permission of that property owner, and I would be loath to proceed without either the permission of the property owner or an initiation of a plan amendment by the city commission, which has not occurred at this point. So, I think you ought to delete that five acres at this point, or initiate proceedings for a separate designation.
The five-acre property is already on the planning map.
Right, okay.
So.
I have, just, I'd like to follow up Doug's question a little bit. My questioning has to do with this procedure of how we move from a Parks Master Plan, which is general in, in desire of the community, to a specific ultimate purchase, which involves negotiations, sometimes sensitive, sometimes mutual, but how that happens when, when we think in order to take any action, we have to change maps? I thought our Parks Master Plan was, was that. It was a master plan, but it, but it then happened over time. And I'm not, you know, I'm not saying this isn't the right spot, or portion of it, or whatever, but it, it just seems to me that, and I suppose in agreement with Doug, is that if we're not sure, a hundred percent sure, the signed agreement has come back to the commission, then why are we changing it yet? It's a procedure of what we, why are we doing it now?
Let me try to give you a lie answer. One way to do this would be to change the comprehensive plan where you were basically establishing a level of service that you were directing staff to acquire land for, for a certain size, for a certain population, a certain kind of park, and not designate individual properties in advance. And that would give us much more latitude to go to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, talk to them, identify a property, negotiate, come back to you, and get the best deal we could in establishing. And we could also set money aside within the upcoming capital improvement plan for that purpose, and we do have money in SDCs for that purpose. So, that would give you much more flexibility than.
See, that was going to be my question, is, do we need to do this in order to expend SDC for parks? And is that the, I mean, I'm just trying to search for the reason when, and don't get me wrong, I think we should be out there acquiring land for future parks within the city, just as developers are out there trying to acquire the same land for subdivisions in future, and if we don't beat them to it, we're not going to have parks for the people living in the houses to go to, you know, so.
I think you can spend the SDCs either way. If you've identified in the plan, either the actual property or the level of service and size and those requirements, that's, that's the planner's answer.
That's true.
Okay, I'm just trying to.
I just wanted to add to that, the way the Parks Master Plan was developed, and you can actually see it on that map, it has radius points.
Rings.
Rings, and what is being deleted is a neighborhood park, which has a smaller radius than a community park. And in actuality, the, the park that is identified as C-ten over to the left, which is off South and Road.
The Wallace School.
And Wallace subdivision, right next to McLaughlin School, does not provide, you know, five acres. And so, that park is actually becoming a neighborhood park, it's still, it's not big enough to be a ten-acre park. This site will then act as a community park for that entire area and accommodate a much bigger radius. There may still need, be a need to analyze this again and look for a neighborhood park further south on, on South and Road as well, to capture that, that area. But to have an additional neighborhood park with a community park, didn't seem to be consistently planned that was adopted originally.
My problem is, is not an issue of whether we can get property for a larger community based park than neighborhood park would be fine, but if we can't, I hate to see that we had a deletion there that worked, or that worked, that was a potential fallback.
One question I would have for the attorney is, is that of, adding on to Commissioner Neely's question, if it is, if we show about fifty acres in a park space, it is a symbol of, and it needs to be, property needs to be captured in that area, is it necessary for it to be site-specific? I'm so used to plans being very symbolic, you know, with a C for community, or, you know, and for neighborhood, across property lines.
My answer is, on the Parks Plan, it doesn't matter. On the comprehensive plan, where you are site-specific, it does matter.
And I, I agree with that.
But we're talking about the Parks Plan.
We're talking about two plans in this order, is now, talking about amending the Parks Plan and the comprehensive plan.
Correct. And, but the question that Mr. Neely has mentioned is dealing with acquisition. Do we have to show this site on the Parks Master Plan prior to purchase?
No, you can just show a general area, and that's sufficient.
That's, that's what I, that's what I wanted to hear. Jack, you had a quick light on here.
First of all, had you finished your staff report, Tamra?
Yeah.
That's a long short.
That's fine.
No, these guys are so anxious, they jumped in, really, I didn't premature, I waited my turn.
The mayor, the mayor, he stopped us.
She said she was finished.
I, I didn't too.
You just didn't hear it, Jack. I'm not going to support this, and for a number of reasons, and I'd like to lay them out. First of all, access appears to be an issue, and this is something that just came up. I think of, I think approving this creates an expectation on the part of the current owner of the property that I think is counterproductive to good negotiations. Thirdly, this area is surrounded by parcels that are one acre to, one-half to one acre, and, and I'm not sure how that plays into this whole business of citing parks, but it's a question in my mind. I think the most important thing is, I went back in the staff report and the Parks Master Plan, and in developing that Parks Master Plan, we set a goal of ten point four acres per thousand in the community. And at the time, and I was involved in the development of the Parks Master Plan, at the time, we recognized that school district property was de facto community park property, albeit not, not available all the time. If we take the school district property and assume that it's available half of the time, and add that to our existing inventory of park property, we come up with park property sufficient, at least in terms of the goal that we established of ten point four acres per thousand, we come up with a park inventory sufficient to support a population of nearly thirty thousand. I'm just, I'm uncomfortable with, I think, the fact that we seem to be preoccupied with purchasing property for parks, as opposed to developing the parks that we currently own. And I think a number of our parks are, are way underdeveloped, and as a result, underused. And, and so, with that in mind, I'm not going to support this. I certainly, and I'm, I'm certain that some people would interpret this as me being anti-parks. Now, that's not true at all. I have a long history of supporting the Parks and Parks and Recreation Program and other leisure services in the city. I would, I would encourage us, for the reasons I've laid out, not to support this, and I would also encourage us to look at the possibility of revisiting our whole strategy with an eye towards developing our existing parks. Perhaps that means revisiting the Parks Master Plan, perhaps it means revisiting the way we use parks, park SDCs, and I'd also like to have us look at ways that we can maintain our existing parks. We've got volunteers mowing parks, we've got parks where we don't have volunteers that are, that look terrible, and I think we ought to channel our energies in those directions. Thank you.
Just, let me grab Doug and then down to you.
Well, first of all, I'd say, Jack, I couldn't agree with you more in terms of the issue of underdeveloped current parks, and the fact that we don't have them, so supported. I do feel, however, that we're talking about areas that they're going to develop in the future, and we have to think ahead to procuring land while it's available. If we don't, if we don't get it, somebody else is going to, and then those, those parks won't be there. The Parks, well, State Park, the Park and Recreation Committee requested early this year a work session with us to discuss issues regarding this. The commission as a whole rejected it, and I think Tim, Paul, and I were the ones that supported it. Now, you're seeing we need to revisit the whole thing without even bringing in the advisory board and without ever having a work session with us. They have gone out, they've visited these sites. I accompanied them when they had visited us to take their site. I accompanied them when they had visited this to take their site. The only concern I heard from this particular site is there's a power line that goes through, and I presume that will have some effect on the value of that land, since you can't , I'm sure. I suggested that maybe we could use it as a jungle camp, as towers, as power. But other than that, I don't know that there are any good uses for it. But in terms of the land itself, I looked at it. It's flat. I think it's got, in the future, various multipurpose capabilities in terms of playground structure, field sports, and so forth. I think it's a nice parcel of land. And we do have the SDCs to purchase parkland. If we don't make those purchases, value of the property over time is not going to decrease, I'm sure. It's going to increase, and we may hit a point then where it's not a question of us not purchasing it, it's that we won't be able to purchase land that we want to get in future subdivisions.
Mr. Mayor, I might remind you, this is a quasi judicial hearing, and before people start staking out positions, you are...
Yeah, we want to listen to the public a little bit, too. Yeah.
Could I respond?
No. Not right now, later. Ed, you got a comment?
I just, I follow Jack on the maintenance budget. I'd just like the public to know that our park maintenance budget has fallen from approximately $45,000 a year, two years, I think it was, if I recall. And then I think now it's like $17,900. And as new parklands come aboard, we're going to get more and more complaints that they care of taking up these parks. I see that we're doing all we can, at least, I think the city manager is mowing a park, for God's sake. That's pretty low. And then you have volunteers mowing other parts of town. That's really getting it down to volunteer, and we're having to get that, and people say we want more parks. I don't know that, I don't know that people are saying that, by the way. I just say they're saying we're not taking care of the parks. So until we solve that problem, I don't know that we should be charging ahead in this person. I think that's the biggest, that's a big stop sign of $17,045.
Okay. Let's, we maybe have more comments or thoughts that we won't have, but let's see if we can have any of those reshaped or shaped by the public. Ed, you want to give your spiel on it? We'll listen to the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I'm obliged to remind those to participate in this de novo hearing, which means everybody can present any new testimony and evidence that they wish to the commission. That this, these proceedings are governed by ORS 197763, among other things, and that the criteria for this decision is set out in the staff report and includes various statewide planning goals and city plan provisions. I will be happy to either share my staff report with anybody who wishes it or to read out the criteria if anybody insists. I will remind you that the standards that are set out in the staff report are the applicable standards, and if anybody believes other standards apply, they must raise those standards during these proceedings, or they will be deemed to have waived those grounds at the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, which will be the next stop in the event that anybody wished to challenge the commission's decision.
This time, let me open the public hearing portion, ask if any member of the public wishes to testify in regards to the proposal.
Kathy Holby, 197, two months south center of our road. Just a couple comments. I wondered if maybe on our helpful hands, that the neighborhood associations couldn't help adopt a park? If that wouldn't be a good thing to go to the neighborhood associations with?
Some, somehow.
Okay. Well, I don't know which ones have.
It's okay.
And then the other thing is that when all the baseball, football, soccer groups use them, that's understood that they police it before they leave, so they don't leave a mess, which would help, because that isn't always happening.
Okay.
And Chapean Park does need some more playground equipment for children. They absolutely do. And because I, you're making it such high density, we do need the parks for the future, because the lots are so small, there isn't room for the children, so I'm...
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
David Alhard again, 19345, Childress. Just to kind of update Kathy, too, that our neighborhood association is working on the master plan with, in cooperation with South End. Our parks committees are working on the master plan for Chapean Park and identifying the needs of our neighborhood association for that park. And we do have the allocation for the playground equipment. Alan Toman made that announcement at the National Night Out Against Crime for us, and so we're grateful for that from the city. And I know it's identified in the, through the budget process that the SDCs be spent to upgrade these parks. It's my understanding, too, that this is not to go out and purchase the property right now, but it's a proposal, proposed acquisition, and this might not even happen, just identifies the property. And I think that's important that we identify the property as parks. We don't have to buy it. We don't have to exercise that option, but it can be identified right now for future. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Good evening. Stacy Fowler, 18044, Peterskeen, Oregon City. First, I support the mayor's analysis that it's probably not appropriate to go out and identify particular properties for potential acquisition in the future. It actually seems like a needless and time-consuming step for us all to be involved in that type process, when what's really needed is to get the help of the Parks Committee and your staff to start negotiating with people, find out what's available, what kind of prices things can be acquired at. And at that point, I think it would be appropriate to come back to the commission and the parks' people and ask if they're moving in the right direction. And at such time as an agreement is entered between the people and the city as to what land should be purchased, then the next steps can be taken, and the comprehensive plan can be amended to correct the zoning once there is a, an agreement between the parties. I just, I support fewer steps when possible. And so I think that the master plan being general in nature is the way that you ought to continue to deal with the acquisition in the future. The other point that I wanted to make, however, was the point about using SDCs. I've been involved with the city in the development of a park most recently, and one of the, I think it's also, well, I think it's important to note that it is true that there are undeveloped parks in the city of Oregon City. There are parks that can't be maintained, and there are parks that are not developed to the extent of their, that they could be for usability. And my guess is because they're, you know, it's a lack of funding. Otherwise, we'd all have beautiful parks if we had all the money. But the particular park that I've been working on in terms of establishing what the value was that would be paid for this park acquisition, I've been working at different, different plans. I've come up with different proposals about this particular park. One of those proposals was that how about if the developer develops the park, puts in equipment, doesn't just give you a piece of raw land, but a piece of developed park? And if we do that, then can we look at getting payment for, being paid back for improving that park and turning over something that's usable from the point that you get it? And I'm told that we can't, that the SDC credits cannot be used to pay for any improvements to a park, that it can only be used to acquire a park at raw land value. So I would suggest that the meeting with the Parks Department and perhaps staff to look at your acquisition policies and your SDC credits is probably very important, because if what you want to do is improve your parks in the future, and you want to find ways to get the community involved and the developers involved in doing that, then we need to look at ways that that can be financed and funded. And to take, to take an offer from a developer, which is, look, I'll grade it, I'll fix it, I'll seed it, I'll put the equipment in, you tell me what you want, I'll get it all done for you, and let's talk about the price. And then to be told that we can't, because we can't spend money on that, well, then maybe we shouldn't be acquiring the park. So I think that there really needs to be some, some further discussion about parks in Oregon City and what we want to do with them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else having a comment on the issue?
The little girl in front of you.
On a park. Let me close the public portion at this time and...
Just a brief recap. There was the concern of actually designating this property prior to purchase. And one thing that could be done is not changing the comprehensive plan where this property from low-density residential to parks, leaving that out, but only changing the Parks Master Plan, same proposed acquisition.
Did you read my notes?
Or you could table it. You could table the plan. Mr. Mayor, you can table the plan then, if you wish.
I understand, yeah.
Yes. But I just wanted to add that.
I appreciate that.
I have a couple of questions rolling around in my head. Is it true we cannot use park SDCs on anything with purchasing raw land?
No, in this case, we didn't want to.
Okay, you didn't, I wasn't getting a specific offer. I mean, so we can use park SDCs for park upgrades?
You could use it for improvements to property. You can't use it for maintenance of property.
Right.
If we want to build a softball diamond or put it in jungle gym, we could spend SDCs to do that.
If they're identified in your...
CIP.
They have identified them.
In the Parks Plan and the capital proofing Plan, we can do it.
Just capital proof.
The capital proofing Plan.
I'd like to just make a comment to the patch that kind of made by Stacy Fowler, whereas I appreciate getting the developers involved, I would like to see the development of the park, driven by the neighborhoods, not the developers or the planning committee ahead of time to develop it. I think, for example, that one of the neighborhood associations, in fact, the Hillendale Neighborhood Association became very actively involved in terms of what's happening there after the neighbors were already there. The concern expressed about procuring land, even though we might not be in a position of developing it, it's my particular feeling that we're essentially banking that land so it can't be used for other purposes. About, I guess it was about three or four years ago, there was this bond measure, Metro Bond Measure, that passed substantially in all counties, over 60% in Oregon City for the procurement of Oregon's, for open spaces. There's no capability of specifically developing or managing them at this time, but the purpose was to take those lands out of development so that they could be held for the future and work out some of the management strategies at a later date before the land was no longer available. And I personally think we have to look at this land the same way. I have no, I mean, I have no particular objective to tabling this. It might be a good idea. Having come into the Parks Master Plan, maybe a method of doing it. But I assume that, and you've indicated, Charlie, that you're going ahead with the negotiations on the park on questions of the school board, seeing how those go. And I know you had some concerns about what was being requested. I understand those concerns, but I presume that's all going on.
Yes.
And I would like to personally see you just go ahead with it. If there are snafus we have to deal with in the later part.
A couple of things, a couple of things I'd maybe like to mention, and that is, I'm not comfortable with the comp plan change at this time. I did have that down, and I think that if, for me, if we're going to do anything tonight, it would be without that portion, because it's too specific at this time for me. Doesn't mean that I don't want that as a park site, but we just shouldn't do that now. I don't, you know, I'm not sure that, and I think we want to make clear the issue. We're not deciding that we're buying this, and we're not deciding that we're going to develop the park there. What we're deciding is that we're allowing our staff, and maybe they already have that authority, but we're allowing our staff to consider the acquisition, or possible acquisition of a site greater than five acres. And that's, that's really the crux of it, is we're talking about size here, an in, a neighborhood five-acre type parcel to a conceptual C-15-acre type parcel, more of a community park than a neighborhood park. I don't mind that type of negotiation going forward. I don't want to do anything that would stop that right now. I'm wondering, do we need to pass something to have that go forward? And I don't want to send the wrong message to the Park and Rec Committee. They did their job. They did the right thing. They reviewed the property, they looked at it, they recommended it through staff, to our city manager, who's in negotiations. I think all the right things have happened, but designating a total parkland right now through the, through the comp plan, it might be that the right thing is to buy the 15 acres and have 10 acres of the park, and sell five acres to fund the improvement of the park. You know, I don't know that, but hypothetically, it might be to put into a maintenance fund, and so you've got the money, because we don't have a tax, you know, general fund tax levy to do that, but we might be able to self-fund the improvement of the park. Now, I don't know if that's legal, I don't know, but conceptually, I don't want to not let that happen if it becomes something the Park and Rec and the neighborhood agrees with, conceptually. So we're not, we're not at that level of decision-making on do we, what do we do with it? We're just trying to say, do we officially, or as official as we can get, allow our manager to negotiate on a large park? I think that's really the issue tonight. Unless we wanted to deal with comp, and I think probably all agree, we don't want to do a comp plan, no matter what we do.
Mr. Mayor, both of the amendments, both of the ordinances before you, the original one that was in the staff report and the one that's been handed out tonight are predicated upon amending the plan. If you're not going to do that, then you ought to set this over perhaps until next meeting. And you might want to give, just give staff some direction to what to bring back to you.
Sure. Just one other comment that I had, just through the notes of the testimony of staff and the public. The issue about the 40-foot or the easement, that's really, title company can figure that out, and our legal people can figure that out. And if it's there, it's there. If it isn't, it isn't. If it's there and it's an access easement to the property, then why buy it? You know, but if it isn't there and we think the access is right, then that's a person-to-city type negotiation you have to handle. And that's, that's just, and I think that's the legal question, not a political question at this point. Jack, your lights.
Do you want me to talk again?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, first of all, I want to apologize for staking out my position prematurely. I truly do. I, yeah. I completely forgot.
You're the new kid on the block.
And I'm still learning. I'd like to respond to a couple of things that Commissioner Neely said. First of all, in no way did I mean to imply that I, I wanted to exclude Parks and Rec from the whole process of reevaluating how we, how we, where our energies are directed. And I want to make that clear, that they're stakeholders and they would have been included. So the "we" that I used was more inclusive than just this commission. And secondly, you know, the statement that property may not be available in the future, certainly that's, that's true, but the reverse of that is, it's not necessarily not going to be available. And, and I just want to remind us that we need to maintain a balance of property uses. And by our own, by our own calculations in our Parks Master Plan, we currently have an inventory sufficient to, to serve a population of nearly 30,000 people. Now, that may not be correct. And if it's not, we should go back and we should revisit it. One of the things that I would encourage the staff to do in, in future reports like this is, is to please recognize the value of school district property as community park property and factor that in, because I don't agree with the calculation that says that we don't have roughly six or 6.3 acres per thousand.
Are you prepared for a motion?
Well, I know Tim hasn't spoken yet, and I would like to let him have a shot.
But then you're welcome. Well, I just want to make a couple of comments that I heard through this, too. And I want, first want to agree that I think we need to develop the parks that we have, and I think that's where we should focus, the Parks and Rec Committee, is to look at some of those things and help us to find ways to do that. The second part that I heard was that the parks are in such disrepair right now. And granted, we don't have the money, but we are just at the leading edge of our neighborhood associations. And I'll tell you, from what I've seen of the neighborhood associations today, as soon as we get some more signed up, I don't think we're going to have as big a problem as we may think. I think it's going to fix itself over a period of time. Third, I think that future park acquisition is critical. I think that this area, specifically South End area, is growing so quickly. I think we need to look at that, and I think that really meets our goal of future livability, of livability for the neighbors. And I think it's, it's critical that we look at that. And last, I think, a comment I think Stacy Fowler made was about the public-private partnership. You know, I fully support that, and I think that's something... I, you know, I fully support that, and I think that's something we, we need to continually look at. Whenever a developer moves into a neighborhood, an existing neighborhood, there tends to be some negative feelings there. And I think the best way to build that or bridge that is to go in and say, we want to build a park, and we want to get your, the neighborhood involved. And I think that's how, that can be fixed. And I think that's how developers can really get their way in and, and really make a positive statement to that neighborhood. So, I would recommend that we look at things like that from a developer's perspective. So.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, since I've heard all the discussion, I'd move that we accept the staff report as written and recommend that we follow their advice and approve it as presented.
Which staff report?
That died for a second. I have another motion.
Is there a pushing to second? No, I don't want to say that. Ian was just playing with it. Go ahead, Ian.
I want to be sure he knows, listen. I agree with you on that. I would move that we table this with the advice to our manager that he continue discussions with the people involved for both acquisition, future acquisition and, or possible future acquisition, and also right away try to curtail that.
Is there a second to that motion?
I think so. As a second.
I have a point of clarification. Would we like, if, if the manager deems necessary for staff to bring any part of this back to us?
Sure.
Possibly without the comp plan change, but if we're talking about designating size?
It's, it's tabled, so any portion of it can be brought back to you with appropriate notice.
And in that regard, under discussion of the item, is there any other direction that we want to make sure we give?
I would like it back to us.
Yeah.
I mean, and not, not, not have the staff insert one, they should bring, I think it should come back to us.
I would, I would like it back to us.
I, I'd like to amend. I would like to amend the motion that the proposal come back to us before it was on the, on the parks plan.
Not on the comp.
And not on the comp plan. That's a spin.
Okay, so that amendment had been moved in, seconded. Any other discussion? First, let's have the vote on the motion to amend.
Mr. Lynch.
No.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Neely.
Aye.
Mr. Alec.
Aye.
Mayor Fowler.
Aye. And then now the motion as amended?
The amended motion.
Any discussion? During that, Gene.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Neely.
Aye.
Mr. Alec.
Aye.
Mr. Lynch.
Aye.
Mayor Fowler.
Aye. Thank you. I think we, that's clarity. All right. Thank you, thank you all, to testify. Moving on, the next item on our agenda is a recommendation to the commission, and it's commission report number nine seven one twenty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Report nine seven dash one twenty-eight is a request for expenditure of sewer and water funds paid for some improvements that were done out Highway two thirteen. I'd like to have, she wants to be there, but I'm going to have Nancy, actually, come forward. Nancy prepared the staff report. She's tried to compile a lot of history in a very short period of time. I think you're generally familiar with the issue. I will say again, before you, beginning this project has a lot of history, it's over a year old, way over a year old. We, along with some property owners, took it upon ourselves, we, we looked at it as a, an opportunity for private public partnership to do some improvements, facilitate, to facilitate some improvements that we on our, on the city couldn't have done. We came together, there was some improvements done, and this was a methodology for the private property owners to recover some of the cost that they associated with construction. Nancy has attempted, and I think done quite well, reducing it to a staff report. So with that, if you have a question, I'd like to have Nancy come forward, answer any specific questions, maybe give a general overall what improvements were done.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just to provide a little background on this particular project, John and Carol Loughlin came to the city wanting to get sewer infrastructure and water infrastructure to their mobile home parks so they could expand it about a year, year and a half ago. And what was required was to extend sewer and water from the south end of Brandon Estates, which is on Highway two thirteen, down to Cherry Lane Mobile Home Park, which meant that a certain extent of sewer and water line would be constructed that could potentially serve the properties in between. And I tried to illustrate that on the attachment number one in your staff report. At the time, there was discussion about establishing an advanced finance district to involve more than them in payment for the project. But that was not established before construction occurred. So there, the Loughlins decided to go ahead and build the project because they're, they're part of the mobile home park was moving forward, and they felt that something could be resolved later on. What I've done is determined what the total project costs were for the construction of the sewer and the water line. And I've also looked at the properties along two thirteen that could potentially be served by the project in the future. And as is illustrated in the table on page one of the staff report, we took either existing zoning or proposed zoning that we could anticipate for properties that aren't even in the city yet, they haven't been annexed yet, so they haven't been zoned for city development. But based on what's around that and what we know about the area, we did our, we gave our best shot at estimating future zoning for the properties. And we determined that about a hundred and seventy equivalent dwelling units could be served at some time in the future by the sewer and the water line. And by adding up the total project costs and dividing by the total potential equivalent dwelling units that could be served by the infrastructure, we came up with a per EDU cost apportionment for the project. And that entire calculation process is summarized in attachment two. Based on those apportionments, we determined that the Loughlins' total project cost, their apportionment for, I forgot to mention, they have sixty-seven units that are served by this infrastructure, that for those sixty-seven units, their portion of the project would be a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, three hundred and, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. The non-Loughlin apportionment, that is for other properties that could potentially be served by the water and sewer in the future, is a hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-four cents. Based on the way the project was handled and what we see for development in the future, oh, I wanted to mention also that we did determine that, based on elevations out there, these units are possible. In other words, we don't have somebody that half of the property is too low or too high or whatever, that they wouldn't be able to benefit from the infrastructure that was constructed. My understanding is the infrastructure was also constructed at elevation so that it can be continued out to the urban growth boundary, as is, we won't have to make, make big revisions to the pipelines that were installed. So, it's staff's recommendation that the city commission authorized expenditure of funds, expenditure of funds to reimburse the Loughlins for a portion of the project that can serve other properties in the future. And we recommend that a signed development agreement be established between the city and the Loughlins so that the details of the reimbursement can be legally bound. We also recommend that the funds be paid out of water and sewer SDCs. This will serve future development in that area. And a minor detail, too, is the Loughlins had paid the hundred and fifty-dollar fee for establishing a advanced finance district. Since one was never established, we recommend that that be reimbursed to them. And we recommend that the city manager be authorized to execute the payments that cannot be expenditures.
Any questions of Nancy?
I had one thing. The Loughlins aren't here. We have met with them, and they have agreed to this proposal, but if you'd like to hear from them, they would be available to, to speak.
A couple queries. I, my understanding is that the city would, essentially reimburse the, if this were passed, the hundred and ninety thousand, excuse me, the one thousand nine hundred dollars. Sorry. I'm trying to finish what I'm supposed to do. And we would be reimbursed with the monies in the future of the EDUs.
Correct. As these properties develop within the city, those, as they, as building permits were issued, that those properties would pay system development charges.
My query is, too, where does, where does the currently, the one thousand nine hundred that we would pay, where does that come from? Are we essentially borrowing from current SDUs to do this?
The funds will be, the next item on here is a budget amendment, but the funds will be paid, are available and will be paid out of the, the appropriate SDC fund, out of water and out of water sewer. And the funds are there.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Yeah. One hundred and ninety thousand, that's right. Yes. The other, the other statement, just a clarification for the record, you indicated that they went ahead anyway. I think they always expected they'd be reimbursed by the city. That is, they had no reason not to expect it at the time that they went ahead. It wasn't because they went ahead anyway.
I understand that they were under the impression that they would be able to.
That's all I want to clarify for the record.
Any other, any other questions of Nancy or that's a pleasure in the committee? Ready for motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve, let's see, what is the report? Number nine seven dash one twenty-eight is presented.
Seconded.
It's been moved in, seconded. Any further discussion? Gene?
Mr. Neely.
Aye.
Mr. Alec.
Aye.
Mr. Lynch.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Mayor Fowler.
Aye.
The items seven, eight, nine, and ten are a consent agenda. Are there any items on that agenda which, oh, excuse me, and eleven, any items the commission wishes to call?
Quick question, I'll give a quick question, number seven, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let me just read the titles of these for the record. One is a transfer of appropriations, which we'll have a question on. One is a request for annexation, which is forward to the vendor commission, actually we have two of those, an application for a business license and a disposition of forfeit church, forfeit church property. Number seven, question.
Well, number seven, I had, I had that on also in that, in this case, but number seven, I'd like to ask, I see the original budget on the, on the second page of the police budget.
Yes.
I see that the original budget was eighty, eight hundred and nine thousand, an increase of eighty-six thousand, and I'd like to have an explanation of that, because that's quite a large increase. And it's just, wherever the expenditures I can, so we need to resolve in ten months. Is that an increase? I think, I think I know the answer, I'd like to hear it, that we're going to be reimbursed for?
It's a grant, I think it's a grant.
Is it a grant that we're going to be reimbursed for down the line? I presume that's.
That's correct.
Okay, that, that answers that question then.
Okay.
And I did like to add that on the, on the annexations.
Yes.
I think, again, it's a tie-in, and quickly, and I wanted to take my vision on that, I think we don't have, we don't have the wherewithal to service all these problems, properties. We have the annexing properties at, at request, which is nice, you know, coming in our city. I think that I would not be so fit to annexing, and I see we cannot service what we have now, we're having, we're having problems now. If there's any way, and I don't know what the legalities are of this, but any way to postpone these things, we find out where our service level is, I'd like to see that happen. I don't know if we have enough police or fire protection for those areas, and we're talking about not enough parks, some people think we do something, you know, those things. So, I just add that, and I, you on that?
Would you wish any of those to be pulled for voting purposes at this time?
I'd like, I'd like the future to have some discussion on, on the annexation, because I think that's going to be quite an issue with the public in another couple, three or four months from now.
Okay.
I would actually request that, because I see that we could vote on, I'd like to hold me, I'd like to vote on the annexation of properties separately from the other three.
Okay, items seven, ten, and eleven, is any, any question? Is there a motion on those three items?
Move to approve. Items, I can say the agenda items number seven, ten, and eleven.
With the staff reports.
The staff reports?
I second that.
Moved in, seconded. Gene?
Mr. Alec.
Aye.
Mr. Lynch.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Neely.
Aye.
Mayor Fowler.
Aye. Questions or comments on the annexation requests?
I have a couple of questions, actually. Both of these annexations have verbiage like this. Anexation of the property will allow future development of, oh, I think I misread it. Anexation of property will allow future development of single-family residential housing. That is not a single, that is.
Right.
I misread.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I would have to say that I, in general, conceptually agree with what Commissioner Rick Grinch, what is the, what is our rate of growth last year? Housing unit growth?
I see you wrong here, check it.
A lot.
Yeah, a lot is the answer. Actually, if you want to get a magnitude, in talking with Metro, the current land, land available within the city, within the urban growth boundary, and within the urban reserves, would support a population of between eighty thousand and a hundred thousand people, which is roughly forty-five times the size of, that the city is today. So, I mean, you could put that, it's just a matter of how fast all that land develops, so it's kind of variable.
See, I know, I mean, I, I can appreciate how your staff has been overburdened with every one of this and that, and I, I mean, if we looked at, if we looked at my understanding of what population growth has been in the city, my, my, my calculation is that we're growing at an average rate, and this has been really recent years, but since nineteen ninety, around five percent a year. That's a very rapid growth rate, and it's extremely challenging, too. And I should, I'm sure Eddie's concerned, and are we growing at a rate faster than we can plan for? And if we are, I won't, I won't let you ask the question. I'll put in my second question. And if we are, it seems like one of the ways to deal with it is perhaps slow down the rate at which we annex, so we could, we could plan subdivisions in a better way, and so that you're able to do some catch-up, which I know you're, you're a little burdened, your staff is.
Well, I think the issue is, in fact, I just had a discussion this afternoon with Al Schlenker, who's a former president of Leeburg City's and the former mayor of Bykenswego, about some other project I'm working on. But that is like, that is the number one question for all cities in the state today, given what happened in five, forty-seven, and fifty, given the amount of growth that we're all faced with, is, is development paying its fair share? But how do you find, how do you determine what that fair share is? There is some differences also that are on the plus side, that we don't need to talk about here, but in terms of about maybe fifty, cities that annex land and develop land are literally expanding their tax bases compared to cities who will not. So, there's also a plus to this in terms of, we have, you know, this, it's hard, I mean, it's a calculation that is extremely difficult, and it's, it is a, it's a big debate statewide at the moment.
You know, I don't want to give the impression that I'm anti-growth, I'm semi-anti-growth. I am concerned, I am concerned, and I expressly for, I think that the urban reserves in Bykens County, particularly from there to D.C., are, are bigger than they ought to be. I am in favor of increasing housing density in. I am in favor of increasing housing density within our urban growth boundary to slow the pressure on those urban reserves. I'm concerned not only in terms of developers paying their, what it requires to develop their land, but I'm also concerned with our ability to, to plan for that development, and whether things are occurring too fast at this time, and if we do so. I mean, some of the issues that I think we're dealing with on the park side, for example, relate to those very questions. And it seems to me, if, if we feel that we need to slow the growth rate down for planning purposes, that the place to do it is at the front end, that's when we annex.
The city's, the staff is coming back to you with a new, revised cost of SDCs, and given the actual cost that I've seen out there in projects, I feel comfortable that they're good numbers. And I think, you know, personally, the sooner that we adopt those, the better off we are. I wanted to mention something as a side note. Lydia Neal is here. She's our new senior planner, and you just made her position permanent, and for that she's very grateful. She is also here to deal...
Lots of work for you.
She also is here to deal with the annexation issues for you, if you have any questions.
You know, one thing that we might want to consider is, is that, because this, I think this does involve some thoughtful discussion, and I know Charlie and I have talked about some type of a retreat that involved just some time away to talk, or a work session even, but I think this is, this is something that we should talk about and look at, what can legally be done? What are the pluses and minuses of, of the growth issue? How we, how it helps build a city, but it also convert into the city at times just because of a workload issue? How do we maintain the livability of the curves? You know, how we look at our densities to save the, the growth into the reserve? And those are all very legitimate questions that should be discussed.
I should warn you that my master's thesis for Lewis and Clark is called Paying the Cost of Growth, so if you get me started, boy, you people will be here forever.
We can talk. Charlie, you have a comment?
I'll give you the one-on-one. We appreciate, I mean, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Neely's comment, particularly on the staff recommendation. I can assure you, because hopefully, the relationship we build as we move the staff forward, we, staff would not be hesitant to recommend you denying annexations or not forwarding. Doesn't mean it wouldn't go forward in the vendor commission, because it still could go forward. If we felt that there was annexations that were really troublesome, and only from a staff position, and obviously you deal with them in policy, if we were really uncomfortable with annexations, because I think what we've heard from you over the months and years, we would not hesitate recommending you not take a position on annexation. These two, we recommend you do, simply from my point of view, from a simple point of view, is that all these properties are contiguous, all ready to services provide, fire, police. If there's an emergency, you're there already. You kind of go out of the city, into the city, out of the city. The boundaries are illogical as heck. These actually are, they clean it up. Whether or not you're into growth, land growth, or however you phrase it, for just that simple reason, I think it makes sense. We recommend to you to make a decision, policy decision, and we accept those clearly. But we're not afraid to recommend to you, no action. In these cases, we're recommending you do, and that's good.
Mayor, you know, I don't have to respond to Charlie. We rarely disagree, but we do now. I would say that, you know, and I don't know if he's discussing at our level, but the point is, I would say this, I heard that same argument in 1980. Square up the city, get these islands, you know, and heard that argument, and we've all heard that, I've heard that argument, but that doesn't fly. We've been squaring this city up for many, many years, and every time you turn around, we're squaring up again. This is expanding, this is bringing people, saying we're condoning expansion of annexation. And there's been quite a bit of discussion on annexation in this state. There's some we can say that we're at least not going to take a stand on this, let them send it forward without us making a recommendation. I'm for that. And when you're prepared for a motion, if I'm allowed, I'll make a motion. And since the people aren't here to defend themselves, won't have to hide.
There is the people, the audience.
It might be here.
You reference number nine, if you're interested.
Yeah. Is there...
Is there a motion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion, just to get it up against the Senate, that we don't, do not recommend these annexations, that we, that we don't recommend sending these forward.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Any further discussion?
Can you invoke the commission?
Mr. Lynch.
No.
Mr. Powell.
No.
Mr. Neely.
Aye.
Mr. Alec.
Aye.
Mayor Fowler.
No. Is there a new motion?
Mr. Mayor, I recommend that we approve the annexation of part number 97 dash 123 and 97 dash 125.
Is there...
Resolutions.
Resolution.
Sorry, resolution.
Is there a resolution, 9745 or 44?
Ah, yes, I'm sorry, I was reading the wrong resolution, number 9744 and 9745.
Mr. Mayor, I second that for, for the commission to discuss.
Discussion.
Once again, I want, you know, I could spend hours, and I should keep hearing them, and that may be a change of your mind. I'm telling you guys, hey, you know, what we're saying here again is, we're simply saying that we're going to keep pushing it out there, we're going to keep backing, this wouldn't stop this annexation in any way, this wouldn't stop the model from getting this. We're saying that we're telling, we're basically saying, hey, we can handle it. And then people are coming to you, and I know they're coming to you and saying, hey, how come you guys are going so fast? Why don't you slow it? And this is an effort to tell people, look, we're looking at this thing, we're talking about slowing this thing down, we never, never take a stand in slowing it enough. I'm not anti-developing. I'm not, I'm just not for development at that rapid rate we're developing. We're overburdening our services, for God's sake. Can't we see that we are overburdened? We can't, we don't have the facility, we don't have the people to service it. I, you know, I'll stop there, just out of courtesy.
That's fine.
Out of courtesy only. But I, I, it's an issue that I think we should, we should say, look, let's really be honest with ourselves. How much are you going to, I know we're crossing, we're going to square this city up until it gets out as far as wherever.
Thank you.
And I'd like to respond, I'd like to say, we can, we can sit here and say that there will be no growth, or, or very little growth. Or we can actually look at this as an opportunity to enhance our city, and we can run this like it's a business. We can make money at it, we can do the intelligent thing. Or we can sit back and say, Joe, let's not move, let's not grow, let's just sit and wait.
Well, Tim, obviously, let me respond to the intelligence part. I'm not, I don't want to go into what tools, what degrees, or what we're doing there. But the fact is, I don't look at it as intelligent, I won't say that doing the intelligent thing, we can do what you might think's intelligent. And, and the fact is, I don't, I think it's, I don't think it's very intelligent, but we're doing, I think it's poor planning. I think we sit here, and all of a sudden, we know, as elected officials from down here on Sixth Street, I happen to know all of our services, and all of a sudden, I know all this stuff. I didn't know this stuff four years ago, but I know it all today, and I'm just telling you, hey, let's, let's stop and think this over. I think it's the poor thing to do. I think we better start some points off. People are going to take action themselves. The people that, that are out there are going to take action with themselves, I guarantee it.
I'd like to, hold. This discussion's over except for me.
No, it's not.
Oh, Doug, you like that?
Since the motion, since the motion, second motion, maybe I have not had a chance to respond to the second motion. Therefore, it is not...
Would you like to speak? I was going to cut off this tit-for-tat here. Do you want to speak?
Yeah, I'll go on the tit side.
Go ahead.
No, I shouldn't say that. I'm not touching that, just speak, Doug. We just had a great discussion about problems in terms of maintaining our current park system. I'm not anti-growth. And if we can recede at a 5% growth rate, or even an 8% growth rate, and meet those services, and at the same time guaranteeing that we're going to slow any impact into the urban reserves, I'm for it. We had, I had the critical person on our promenade task force call me up and say, you know, I'm going to stop weeding that area, and we'll go out for promenade, which is, those beds have been well maintained. Because in order to go weed those beds, I have to walk through weeds. And in other words, the lawns weren't being mowed on this highly visible tourist attraction area. We just had a discussion earlier in terms of our parks, about the problems we are having in terms of maintaining our own current infrastructure. It applies not only to our parks, it applies to our buildings. It's true of the Pioneer's Community Center, it's true of the, of the fire stations, and I hope we've got a bondage that's going to address some of them. It's true of the Carnegie, it's true of the swimming pool. These buildings are not being maintained, they are in fact deteriorating. And by saying, well, we're going to bring growth in to help us deal with this, we're bringing in SDCs, buying in properties and so forth, and perhaps that increased tax base can help improve the, to guarantee that maybe some of the new parks that come into play will be adequately developed and so forth. I'm not sure what it's going to do with our current park structure and so on. I, the implication to what, what Tim said in terms of the intelligent thing to do, I think he was pushing my buttons as well as Alex. I regard myself as intelligent, too. And yet, when I see these infrastructure problems that we've had, not able to keep up with them, I think we are, in a reasonable basis, to say, look, are we growing at a faster rate than we can to maintain the infrastructure? And I think we need to have that dialogue. And I don't know what harm it would do to slow annexation for a period of time, until we can have that dialogue.
Okay, go ahead, Jack. Well, I'm going to play my normal role of peacemaker.
I think, I think that we do need to have a discussion with respect to our services and our ability to service newly annexed land. And you mentioned some sort of a, of a retreat, I'm assuming you were referring to a trip to Maui, but...
Get to it.
But I, I do, I do think that we ought to get together and sit down and talk about this, because I think that there's a substantial gap between the perception and, and reality. The perception, I think, is generally that we don't have the capacity to serve these areas, and I'm not entirely convinced that that's always the case. And I, and I think that we could sit down and have a good, healthy discussion, including the use of staff, about our ability to serve, and where our weaknesses are in our service areas. I think it'd be helpful.
And we will do that. I don't, you know, we don't, we can debate this all, and I think there are pluses and minuses to, to growth, but I think, I agree, I look at the systems that we as a city operate. I mean, we're in the infrastructure business, and if we're talking about handling growth, you know, is that, does that mean the ability to put in a water meter, or maintain a waterline, or does it mean the ability to continue to process the paperwork flow through the city? You know, because the planning, engineering, we know those are backfog, we know there's a lot of work, and yet, those are 100% funded by growth. I mean, you know, those are paid, but then it's a matter of queuing up and having the right personnel and doing all the things, and filling vacancies and all that. But when I look at this infrastructure, the capacity of our water system, the capacity of our service system, the capacity of our turn, drainage system, you know, those capacity issues, there are road SDCs. My goodness, we have over a million dollars in our park SDC right now. I mean, we should be out doing the things we're doing. I mean, development, before we get dolled down on it, you know, I think it would be good to have a discussion about what in the world that has brought us, you know, it is buying our apartment, and it is giving us improvements on South End Road. It is doing a lot of things that implements our capital improvement plans and our CFP plans. So it's not all, it's not all bad. I agree with you, Doug, there's a lot of buildings that are, that are, that are lacking in maintenance. But that's not always because of growth, it's because of use. And that use is from me, and all of us, you know, and the new people, too. It's the whole city, but we, we all are using those facilities, and a lot of times, we put, we want to put all the blame on the growth, you know, but I think there's a balance that we can, we can have. So, anyway, it's not all bad, but I, I do think it's, if we, and then there's the legal side. I mean, if you say, we got to stop it, you know, then the big M-word comes up, moratorium, and all you got to do is, when you have moratorium, is figure out how to get out of the moratorium by state law. And so, then there's the legal side of how we, and I think that's what you proposed, the, the original question was good, is, is there a way to look at the rate, rate of these and facilitate the movement of projects through the city? And I don't know if there's legally a way to do that. That's a, that's an interesting question, but let's not beat that tonight. Do we have a motion on the floor? I think we do.
The motion is to adopt resolutions 9744 and 9745.
It's been moved in, second. Any other discussion? We've all had a shot. Okay. Gene?
Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Neely.
Aye.
Mr. Alec.
No.
Mr. Lynch.
Aye.
Mayor Fowler.
Aye, thank you, Doug. It's, you do have to talk longer than that.
You was going to change.
Yes.
That was on my table.
Doug's name.
Doug's name. That's fine. I, I do want to clarify that I will be making the appointment of the commission at the next meeting. We have seven applicants. I appreciate the comments I've received so far from commission members. I do have a few more people to talk to, and that appointment will be made in the next meeting. Thank all the public and the people who apply to the patients. I do have one appointment to the Civic Improvement Trust, and that is Susan Reynolds. She's been active in the community, lives in the community, works at the credit union, and is also on the chamber board, I think would be an excellent member to our Civic Improvement Trust. I do have one request by the chamber, just throw it out to the commission. They requested that there be a commission position created for the Chamber of Commerce board, on their board, and asked me to see if, if that was something the commission would be interested in, and if so, if one of the members would want to serve on that position. This, I think the school district has a position, and they just wanted it for communication purposes.
I think for communication purposes, I think it's a good idea.
I see a couple of heads nod, a couple of heads don't nod.
I don't think schools are going to have anybody on their board either, for, for the minority opinion.
What, as of now?
I don't, I agree with Eddie. I think, I, I think that we should be supportive of the chamber, but I think the chamber should be the organization of and for business, and the voice of business, and, and I'm not sure that any political entity ought to have positions on that board. I think it puts us, and potentially the chamber, in a difficult position, so I don't support it.
Mr. Mayor, I can maybe add briefly, we originally asked staff to participate, and I communicated this exact, I was very uncomfortable, other than if it was just to carry information back to you, it was okay, but to be a part of it, I really was uncomfortable at the staff level, so I asked them to talk to the commission.
Yeah, I understand. You know, I don't want to read more into it than it was a, it was a gesture on their part to have the city hear what's going on within the business community. I mean, I think if there's times, and I've seen it, because I've been on the chamber board as a businessman in town, while I've been the city commissioner, and I've been on the board for lots of time, but where there were times that I said, I'm sorry, I'm abstaining from that issue, but I still sat there and listened. So I think it would be incumbent upon whoever, maybe if it is any of us, if we do this at all, to know that, hey, you know, there is, you don't take off your, it's hard to take off your elected hat.
I guess, maybe, maybe we could throw back to, does everyone have a...
Maybe ex-official.
Ex-official member. A non-voting member.
Yeah, I agree with that. I don't...
Tell me what your pleasure is, I'll report to the rest of the board in the morning. Well, I, I don't know that there's consensus, but I think three members are at least in agreement, too.
I, I think, let them throw back to us as an ex-official member, as opposed to...
Yeah, see if there's interest in that, yeah. I mean, without taking a vote, I mean...
Well, I don't agree with that, I just, I just don't have, I don't think we should be involved in any way. I can get all the information I want through their correspondence, I don't know what, what the city tax payer is going to gain from being, from having us involved in a businessman's cloak.
Well... Well, first, so you won't accept the appointment?
Well, I.
Okay, well, I just ended on a little levity. I think there's at least a majority of the commission might consider an ex officio position. Anyway, that's all. Any, anything, what do you catch us?
Yeah, page two of your agenda.
I took care of that already.
You did?
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I held off the appointment of the planning commission. I appointed Susan Reynolds to the Civic Improvement Trust. The item fourteen is an informational only. And where it's, and with that.
We're out of here?
No, you're not. I made a statement at the very beginning.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, I said, all right.
There's a, actually, I think I've got a list of things here. One is that I have had a request. And I think it's a rather compassionate request, and I understand, of a person that has a, a relative that needs monitoring, and there is no capability of having a temporary mobile home site located to a house in the city's ordinance, hardship kind of case. The county does have one. And what I would like to recommend, and I've talked a little bit to Rich Carson about that, is perhaps getting involved and perhaps drafting a, a draft ordinance for people to look at before we even present it to the commission. And I'm putting that forward. I'll probably proceed in that fashion. I wanted to inform you that I would be doing so.
Any, any problem with having?
I could read, I could read briefly, but the county ordinance is very simple. But.
Any, any problem with having staff look at a hardship type ordinance? For living quarters?
They, they, I mean, they'd be a temporary living quarter.
Yeah, I, I understand that. But I think there's a substantial difference between an urban setting and a rural setting with respect to whether or not that's appropriate or not.
I was going to say, with our downsizing laws.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm really, I understand the problem. And I wouldn't mind looking at an ordinance. But I'm skeptical about whether or not something can be drafted in a fashion that, that really is, is acceptable in an urban setting.
I might give up on it.
Yeah.
You know, I just called, I just called Tim's attention, but we had a couple of things in our neighborhood that we're living in vehicles.
Temporary mobile homes.
And you know, unless you're a place driver, it really is a burden on the neighborhood, and I think that's really important. And it might sound cruel in this particular case, is why, you know. But anyway, it's something really, that's really a problem.
Maybe, maybe just as a starting point to, for Rich, is maybe you could just get a copy of the county ordinance and write it to us for information before you do any, kind of, any groundwork, and, and we can take a look at it and see.
Or if you have a stronger feeling that starts to emerge, says maybe this isn't.
Well, the big issue is going to be, I mean, I'd be concerned about making something like that administrative. If you could do it, but the minute that, that somebody moves in a unit, whether it's a trailer or a wreck vehicle, whatever, next door, they're going to come down here and start yelling and say, what is this all about? You haven't public hearing. So I mean, it can be done. It could probably be administrative. It could be a land use decision. It would be, yeah. So it's, it's possibility, just mad, it just depends on whether you want to go down that.
Sounds like.
No, it seems, I mean, it seems our ordinance had to be drafted in such a way that actually, however we define the, the domain of a neighbor, has to be actually involved in that decision making. That is, you don't do it unless you have some percentage of your neighbors you meet. And that you've got temporary, and it may not do so many works, but.
Yeah, then you're, then you're.
You could be a attorney, and your policies are driven by.
You either have discretionary standards or you have clear and objective. I think there's a real problem when you get into a neighbor veto, which is unrelated to any policy, just that they don't like it. So if you want to do it, do it as either clear and objective, so somebody can just make the permit, or discretionary, where you have the opportunity for hearing. But don't make it subject to a neighbor veto.
But I, I don't want to make, I don't know if, I mean, I want to make sure there's consensus kind of before, no, no offense to the suggestion, but it's, you know, I don't want to burn up a lot of staff time if we kind of have a gut feel that, you know, that's a rural thing, and if there's five acres and you put them over home, that's, that's not a problem. But in an urban setting, maybe they occupy the bed. You know what I mean? Without sounding, trying to be cruel to the situation. Kind of, what do you, I mean, is there?
All I'd be willing to do at this time is ask Rich to provide us with a copy of the county ordinance. Take a look at that and see if we want to proceed from there.
Let's do that. Let's, okay. I've come with that, but that's about all. Go ahead, Doug. You got the floor.
Okay. I think we all received a letter from the chair of Pioneer's Center Advisory Committee.
Two items.
There's two items. I, I don't know that you've responded to it. I'm, I'm a bit, maybe a little bit confused.
I have, I have the letter. I started the two items of response. And really, one was a political question about trying to remove the dollar fee. And the other was developing future levy requests, I believe.
Yeah. And that, that was, it was actually the first one. My understanding is we're dealing with federal legislation, payback issue from the government.
And the county. And I was going to have Georgiana give a little more specifics, and then draft a letter to the county. And we, and to our.
I spoke to Georgiana. The county's already been in communication with her. Apparently, we're not the only ones to receive a letter before sanctuary. It's gone up to county people.
But if you'd like, well, I'll get a letter drafted and then respond to the commission.
Yeah, it could. The other thing I had.
Doug, could I, could I comment on the, on the levy issue? And that is that when, when we had the work session with the community center, it was my understanding that our direction to them was to provide certain materials, do certain analyses in preparation for next year's budget, so that we can make a decision at that point of what we're going to do. So any request now to consider a levy is way premature.
No, I think his statement, I didn't take it that way. I'll just read that. Secondly, we feel strongly that this is now the time to pull together representatives from various organizations in the community to begin looking at any levy or district that provide an adequate amount of funding for a variety of services. I did not, their minutes suggested that they'd be putting something specific to the Pioneer Community Center or Senior Center levy. This statement, I don't think reflects that. I think it's a, it's a general concern. And we're aware of the potential of a levy if we can do it. So I don't think there was anything in, in that statement that concerned me that much. It was the first one that concerned me. The third thing is, we got a, every month, we get a statement of expenditures and percentage outlay by the various departments in terms of their budget. I'd like to point out, at the end of July, which was the first month of our current fiscal year, the city commission's budget has been 36% used. And I think we, since it's our budget, we all know why. We, in one month, is that, I mean, is that it?
That's correct.
It comes up right at the top.
That's correct.
Okay.
In fact, you'll see, probably go up to, it could be go up to 90% in the first several months.
Yeah.
It, it's.
It's not the dues.
Typically, memberships.
Yeah. All right. And they're not health bump and fishing retreat memberships. Yeah, why not?
The next, the next one, retreat we're going to have, right?
Yeah, yeah, we'll try to get a few dollars. But that's, that's one.
That's, the other thing was, Jack has brought this up, I think, maybe two or three meetings ago. We have not heard back from the, the request from the Civic Improvement Trust Committee to bring to the city commission a request for a 2% increase in what I will call the hotel motel tax, even though that's not what it's called.
And that's what I would have said too.
And I don't, I don't know, Charlie, do you want to do a big update? Do you know when that might be?
You asked us to do that, and we responded, I believe it's the twenty, your next meeting?
Eighteenth. Third, seventh, and then next meeting.
That's mentioned on the answer.
Yeah, there's a work session.
There's a social work.
I believe your next meeting, I asked it, brought back, and it was a question staff was struggling with. You'll remember whether or not, you know, something that belonged to Ray for you. Were any assumptions coming back directly to you, what to increase? And I believe we have scheduled.
That regular issue.
We are scheduled for our next commission meeting.
The other concern I have is that we, I think we have to deal with, and not too, I think, I just don't think I have. I said there'd be several. It's the last one, however.
Go ahead.
I think we need to deal with the issue in terms of these urban real bond monies. They are accumulating. We need to decide what we want to afford to the people. And.
I need, I need to mention about that.
And then I have one more. Go ahead, Charlie.
I responded to the urban house specifically, and that has come up many, many times. We cannot, it would be very premature for us to come before the commission, the public, until sometime the first year of January, until after the first year of measure fifty, implementation of, of all, of, of all of the, the.
Bells and whistles.
Legal.
Yeah, the legal bells and whistles are found out. There, everything is still very uncertain. There is nothing we can tell you anymore specific last week or next week. We have some of the finest people that can be available to give you information in regards to the urban real bonds. But it'd be just, what would happen if we, how we could have it next week, and what they're going to tell us is, wait till the first year. And our plan is to have it back one time, and sometime at the first year.
I guess the issue, I think eventually that information comes to us. So I think it'd be good if we started talking about what priorities we'd have in terms of our urban renewal agency money in general, anyway. Even, even if we don't know how that funding can be handled, I think it should be.
I was thinking here on this.
Is there, is there a question that we can use any of it?
Yeah, on the sum of it, on what's within, you can use any of it. But the question is, it may, it may not be, it may be within the compression, outside the compression.
We have, we've been asked, I think Commissioner Alec at the last meeting raised the issue. And I just gave Charlie a memo saying that because our big bond partner is out, I'm going to have to get this back to you at the end of this month for your first meeting in October. So you'll get some of the idea of the legal parameters. That'll help you frame some of the questions on your priorities.
Maybe just as a, because, you know, I, I appreciate your note, but there is members of the public that I think have had certain expectations as to what we're going to do with that urban real bond, as, as well as ourselves. And I think if, in fact, the, the answer is, because of the legal interpretations in the legislature, we have to put that off till January of ninety-eight, that we should put a little message of this, that fact in the talk of the town or wherever, so that what we hear, we say.
The new law is not effective until October fourth. Then you've got to deal with, what does the attorney general say about the interpretation of that law? Then you got to litigate some of that.
That's a fair timeline. I mean, those are, that's, I think, maybe we could do something like that. Anything, Eddie, you done? Charlie, quick?
Briefly was October eighth. We have scheduled, it's a pretty busy night. You haven't had a work session for a while. We're going to put three items, try to put three items on the agenda. The planning commission is requesting that they, they meet with you to talk about street, they call it skinny streets. What's the, what's the skinny streets?
Narrow, narrow.
They're going to talk about some of those issues with you. That's an issue. Also, we would like to talk to you that night about.
Modular.
The, I hate to, about future facilities of the city hall. We're already in need of outgrown. And we've talked internally about another modular, and I vetoed that tonight. That was going to be on the gen tonight. And I took it off the agenda. I just couldn't bring myself to another modular yet. But we're really cramped for space. And we need to talk to you about where we want to go. And the third one was about potential needs assessment for a future levy, whether it be, we've received correspondence from the Pioneer Community Center, parking recreation, parking recreation. I've asked the department, let's put something together. To talk about some what ifs and may about lettuces. And that, we hope to put, and it sounds like a lot, but I think it can precedent a meaningful time, October, October eighth at seven o'clock.
Right. Okay, good. I just saw a note that I'd written myself to just flag an item. And we don't have to have a big response now, but maybe we could get an update. And it was on one of the others that we had asked, or mentioned Rich a while back, and that is some, I don't want to say internal tweaking, but just some thoughts about a traffic manager and what that might do. And I'm interested, just, just curious of what your thoughts are, how that's going and whatever, but maybe.
I'll be glad to do it as soon as I fix the engineering problem.
Understand.
And not only that, but you know, this is, this is, this is interesting. The space requirements now are restricting us a lot. You know, we're looking at putting people in my office, but I don't know how you do that. I guess, I mean, I volunteer to sit at my computer someplace. Oh, this one I don't have.
I should mention, the city engineer, Bob Coulson, right now has two other people in the off, in his office with him. There's, there's three engineers in one 12 by 12 space. So it's, it's, it's a little ridiculous, but that's what it takes.
I think that's, I think that's it. Jack, you got something?
Just something that I'd like to be updated on, if not next meeting, then the meeting after that. And that is the status of the Main Street parking lot, where we are on that, when that's going to be started. And the Seventeenth Street project. Seventeenth Street was bid, and I was told that it was going to be underway almost, I thought, mid-September.
It will be. The construction bids are out right now. They'll, they're not due till, we have six to fifth, so it'll be like the thirteenth. Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to ask that we had one time talked about, and we had reported, and there was something building that was going on around town. You know, you'll see location. And one time, Rich sent us a little update on what's been approved, much of what's going in. I appreciated that, and I hope that can continue. And then lastly, I just, when Rich rang a bell, when he mentioned to me that they're so crowded up here, I want the people to know with this new annexation that we're supporting, that the money will be rolling in on these SDCs at such a rate, we'll probably be able to do it. They said, no.
Now, Eddie, that's not fair. You know how the system works. I, I hope we don't let this whole issue drop about time for us to get together and talk about existing service levels and our ability to serve not only the existing community, but, but the annexed areas. Because I do think that there are some misperceptions out there with respect to our abilities. And, and I think we've got to be very clear in our own minds where we are if we're going to chart where the hell we're going to go.
Okay. With that, we're adjourned.
Sign papers.
And sign papers.